Welcome, please Debbie. Bykman?
Present.
Lee Singer?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
Echis?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Gross?
Present.
Schruller?
Present.
Throm?
Present.
We have a quorum. All right. The first items are the minutes from the 28th meeting. I had three changes. One was the date on page one. Also on page one to add that I was absent. And the third one was on page three just having the vote for the motion be after the discussion under wage determinations.
Move to approve the minutes of the December 28th, 2015 meeting with amendments.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. The next minutes are from, that you heard in the prior meeting. And I just had three changes on page one when we're discussing Dave Shower and Orshlin. I wanted to pull that statement that says dependent upon the commitment from the city. That's on the fifth line. So that sentence would end after 32,003, 75 square feet. Then to add a sentence that says Orshlin was requesting a partnership at some level for improvements to 12th Road. And add one more sentence that Dave Shower stated that Orshlin would be responsible for the cost of the right-hand turn lane on Highway 36 requested by KDOT. It's just clarifying that the size of their building isn't dependent on us. But if they did want a partnership for us on the road and I wanted it in the minutes that Dave Shower said they would take responsibility for that turn lane. And for that motion it'd be to amend something previously adopted.
Move to amend the motion from December 14th, 2015 with the changes that were so noted by the mayor.
Second.
Are there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. The next item are the minutes that were also approved last meeting. In the paragraph where it says KDOT will remit state funds of $750,000 to the city, I wanted to change that to KDOT will contribute state funds of $750,000 for this project because they're not giving the monies to us. So it's just to clarify that. And again, that motion would be to amend something previously adopted. I would entertain a motion.
Move to amend the moments from the special meeting Thursday, January 7th meeting.
No, wait, December 22nd meeting.
December 22nd meeting to the mayor's amendments.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. All right. Thank you so much. We are going to dispense with the regular order. Oh, nope, we're gonna have public comments right now. Is there anything that would like, anyone that would like to speak that is not on the agenda at this time? You're limited to five minutes and you need to state your name, your address, and your ward. All right. We'll move on to business and discussion items. We're gonna dispense with the regular order of business and go to item number three, which is on page 21 and 22. And it's the bids for the water shop repairs. And as you can see, we got three bids. The lowest one, I believe is pronounced, what'd you say?
Waikie. It is Waikie.
Waikie?
Waikie and Sons. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the low bid, Waikie and Sons, $65,550 for the repairs at the water shop for the roof, windows, doors, and sides.
So about the shop repairs and the roof, right?
And the roof, yes.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor, have we used this contract before? 747 indicates what?
None.
Greenleaf? Greenleaf area? Is that anywhere?
They're south of Greenleaf, about seven miles.
Have we used this contract before?
Their contracts, their licensed contracts are in town.
They do good work. They did the Legion here not too long ago.
Good question. I think that, to me, the best thing about this is that, remember, we had the bid in July of $100,000 from HRS and we decided to go ahead and bid it. And now we came in significantly less. So it's a good thing that we proceed to go out and bid like our policy says. So we have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. All right. The next item is the Resolution 2016-01, which is a gap waiver for the 2015 financial statements. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2016-01, resolution for the gap waiver.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. The next item business is, are the fireworks. Debbie has laid out the contract at the desk for everyone. And it's proposing the $6,700, which is the same as it's been for the last three years. And just kinda FYI, we've always taken $3,000 out of our special parks fund and $3,700 out of transit. That's historically how that's been funded. So do we wanna go ahead and order it? We get, what, a 50% price discount? And that's what the $6,700 represents is the 50% price.
I think he orders some of those on discount early. That's why we pay half up front.
Okay.
Do we ever get any donations or anything, Rick, that go towards fireworks from anybody?
I don't think we had any last year.
Cause I know in years past that people have donated to the city for the fireworks.
We would certainly welcome it.
I know that. I saw them displayed the last couple of years and they've been great.
Oh, yeah, they've been beautiful.
Yeah. I mean, they've lasted about 20 minutes and I thought they've been really good.
I move that we approve ordering the fireworks so that we can get the discounts.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. We will go to number two right now regarding the Mount Calvary sewer proposal. This says Jared Smith is, are you the one that's gonna speak on behalf? All right.
I'm Jared Smith, President of JD Construction. We are the general contractor for the Mount Calvary Lutheran Church Activity Center Edition. Emily is the architect and Tony from CES, as you all know. We're here to visit with you guys tonight about options with relocating the city sewer that goes through the existing alley that we would, another discussion, like to get the alley vacated and get that ordinance in place. We, I believe you have one option in front of you. And in the last couple of days since that has been sent out, we've came up with another option that as of late today looks like it could be a very good possibility because of the opportunity for us to bore it down the street instead of an open trench where we worry about settling, et cetera, and that much more traffic control, so.
So are you, is this a proposal that is gonna go down 18th Street then?
Yes.
Oh, good.
That's what you used to plug.
Do you have a picture?
I guess I'd like, Rick, we have had a meeting with Rick, Dave, Rob from CES, and Kent.
Yeah, one of the downsides about going down that street is we're gonna put all of that flow into a line that's much lower. And it's Kent's recommendation that if we do that, we're gonna, we'll have to line that sewer line that it's going into, which is not even on the list because it's so far down.
Just move it around on the list.
Plus it's gonna have to have a new manhole, too.
You're talking about down there, on that, between Laramie and Jenkins, like we initially thought?
Yep.
You're just saying we have to line that?
Line that.
How far down do they have to line that, Rick, to 15?
Uh, probably farther than that. I'm not sure. I'd have to look at the maps and see where that goes. But it goes west.
Oh, I know that.
And eventually south.
So do you have a picture of your proposal now for us to see?
Yes.
Is it the same as the one that was back in 2015?
No, 15.
In February? February?
It's a little different. It's a little different.
Is it?
Same concept.
Concept, going down.
Just going south.
Right, down to the alley down there.
They're gonna bring copies to us so we can go ahead and ask questions. But I'm sorry, I missed the discussion because I was asking for copies.
I wanted to know if it was the same as the one we had in February that they had.
And you said it's a little bit different than that?
I think Kent and Rick would like the manhole moved out into the street so we would run straight down the center line of 18th Street.
And where is it now?
It's about 20 foot into the alley to the west.
Into the alley, okay.
So we eliminate that manhole, put a new one in the middle of the street and hook up from both directions and from the new line on the north.
Would that eliminate what Kansas Department of Health and the Environment had said that would require additional maintenance so there wouldn't be any additional maintenance required?
That letter would not be required.
I called and talked to Tony about that earlier today and that was my concern. How often was the city gonna have to go up and flush it, you know, put flush tanks in? So, you know, we'd have to take a truck up there, dump water down the manhole to flush a tank out. Nobody knows how long it's gonna, how much water or anything it's gonna take to flush the line. The problem is, once that's built, that slight of grade where the solids start building up, you know, it could be a weekly deal, we're gonna have to go up there and flush it because of the amount of coming out of the hospital. Nobody knows, you know? And this is gonna be forever if it goes that way.
Yeah, especially since it's coming from the hospital and we've had problems coming from other facilities.
I know. That's why I called Tony this afternoon and visited with him about possible going south.
So we're gonna have the .4 grade that KDHE requires?
Yeah, it'll be like 2%, 2 to 3%. It'll be a lot more than enough.
Yeah, okay. Instead of .4, it's gonna be 2 to 3%? Oh, okay. So this is the manhole that you're moving, that circle right there to the center of the street? Is that what you're referring to?
Correct.
That one right there?
Oh, that.
Here's the truth. I like the design.
The manhole on Laramie, between Laramie and.
Hey, Tony, that one's already there. That's the one you're gonna move?
Yeah.
We think the earlier one.
The one to the far right?
That one stays.
To the far right?
That's where the existing one is.
Okay.
We're gonna move it to the left.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you believe the only thing we, the city, would be have to do then is improve the lining of that sewer line because of the increased flow?
That was Kent's concern, not really because of increased flow, just I think that it's, hasn't ever been lined.
Hasn't ever been lined.
How many years old?
About 50.
So it's just not falling into your lining program yet?
And, well, we don't, we haven't gone out to bid for anything for even 2016, so we can even change it as early as 2016. What's your intent, timeframe to build?
Um, this is in March or April.
Within the next few months, ideally, but we can start construction, but.
And what's your completion date then?
Six to eight months.
Six to eight months, okay. Well, then we can get the CIPB done in the spring.
Well, it needs to go on, it would need to go on next year.
On 2016 or 2017?
Yes, on 2017.
Why is that?
The relocation of the sewer line would happen as soon as we get all of our approvals done, maybe it's possibly as soon as February, March. We wanna get the utilities relocated out of the existing alley so we can start the vertical phase of construction in the March to April timeframe. So I just wanna make sure that you guys understand that flow will be redirected in the near future.
So why can't we do it in 2016?
Given that, if they're gonna do it that soon, you couldn't, because you have to understand, we would know how much footage to add on here. I was gonna, I'm gonna bring the program and all that, the next meeting anyway, working on that today. And we can look and see what it's gonna take to add this one. Because remember that there has to be a manhole place when they do it.
Right. So you're not changing any manholes over here, but, well, you're just ending at that manhole between the church and the alley, right? That one staying the same on the far left?
Yeah, we might replace that manhole. I think it's brick right now, so it may be replaced. It sounds like Kent wanted it replaced, I believe.
Yeah, I believe Kent wants it replaced, yeah.
It's brick.
Yeah.
We had one.
So you're gonna put the line in from that manhole to the other manhole?
Yes.
And then you'll connect that manhole to that empty, where the manhole used to be?
Yes.
Okay.
See, I'd be, it'd be smooth.
Yeah, yeah, we can. I don't have any, I was all prepared to tell you my problems with this one, so I'm really glad you're coming with an alternative, just so you know.
Well, we like that because we're all for options.
Yeah.
For this reason, and, you know, that's kinda the point, was get your guys' input and see if one of the options was more favorable.
Well, I would say this one is extremely more favorable than what I read in the packet, so.
Yes. Rick, are you saying we have things that we have to put in order before we could approve this?
No. Well, there's some other issues that they wanna talk about here, too, on this. I mean, if that's where you wanna go, then we'll discuss and see what it takes to add that, because we'll have to do that and revise what I've got set for this year and probably just add this to it, at least for the first block. I'm discussing with Kent. But if they've got a timeline where they're gonna have this done by March, that's not a.
Best case scenario, weather permitting, but that is our.
Well, that's not gonna hurt it because we're not even gonna take bids on the cured place until March anyway, so it would be.
Yeah, they'll have theirs in by the time we start.
They should have an end, we'll discuss that. But another issue that you need to discuss, I think maybe they're gonna bring it up, is if that's where this is gonna go, then the other related issue is to start the process of vacating the alley. And we'll have an ordinance at the next meeting for that.
Didn't I hear you say to begin in March or April, to be completed in six to eight months? Did I not hear that?
That's correct.
That's the ideal schedule.
Yep, that's the ideal schedule.
The entire project.
The whole project, not the sewer line.
Yeah, the sewer line should, boards should be done in a matter of a week.
Yeah. But, so I would recommend that you give approval to vacate the portion of the alley that's required for the project. They will set a manhole on the west side of the church. That'll be the answer, we wanna make sure that stays within the alley that's not vacated or somewhere. And we'll work with Tony on exactly how many feet. We'll have an ordinance for that next time. That takes 30 days after that ordinance is published before that takes effect, so we're talking end of February before that takes effect. And then, I think that, that kinda eliminates the need for the easements, except for maybe gas, and they can handle that privately.
Yeah, gas is moving up to.
We will need an easement through the park and not to the north direction, which you guys already know about, you're everywhere at that.
And there's a manhole on the, on what you gave us before going around the building? I assume that's a manhole, Rick, right there? Or they're installing that manhole? Is that a manhole right there?
I'm not sure that's the location of that.
We'll have to have a starting point, right? Might have a starting point?
They'll have to put a, they'll put a manhole on the west side of the building wherever it needs to be located, at the end, at what'll be the beginning of that sewer line.
Beginning of it, yeah, okay. Does the planning and zoning need to do anything with this before we approve it?
They're meeting Thursday, so what actions we take here tonight will be relayed to the Planning Commission on Thursday.
Well, do we wanna just vacate the alley for tonight and see if planning?
Well, you can't vacate it, it's, we just, we'd start it, we just need approval to begin that. We'll let the Planning Commission know the alley will be vacated. Because they're approving a site plan, which will require the alley to be vacated, so their approval on the site plan would be subject to the alley being vacated.
Your building's, what, 75 feet wide?
Um, a little bit wider. Yeah, a little wider than that, I believe.
75 by 100?
Oh, you're talking, okay. I was thinking towards.
Coming down the alley.
Yeah, down into the alley, yes.
So tonight we need to vacate a portion of the alley?
Well, we won't vacate, just start the process, just council, just vote to begin.
Prepare an ordinance.
I'm not sure you need to vote on it, I just direct staff to prepare the ordinance.
I think they're, like I said, looking for consensus, just the direction that they can continue with their plans and.
We'll proceed with, do not have it at the next meeting.
So you wanna consensus that we're okay with vacating that portion of the alley?
Yes.
Do we have a consensus for vacating that portion of the alley?
We'll prepare the ordinance, bring it back at the next meeting.
And then at the next meeting, we can look at the site plan as approved by the planning and zoning?
No.
No?
No, Planning Commission, no, council doesn't review site plans, that's Planning Commission.
Well, we'll come back to us then.
If there's any, if there are any easements or dedications, those would come back for acceptance.
So we don't, as far as this plan for the sewer line, we don't have to make a motion to accept this plan for the sewer line?
Oh, I think you need to do that, yes.
Okay.
Tonight, which is independent of what the Planning Commission's gonna do.
Okay.
Yeah, if that's the layout you want, yes, I think you need approval, authorizing them to proceed, yes.
This is all gonna be.
I was just trying to make sure what you want.
That's our intent, yeah.
What we need.
It hasn't been fully designed yet, but we're fairly confident it works.
So I need a motion for the plan of the sewer line as proposed at this meeting.
Yeah, tonight's.
And I guess we will, this needs to be attached to the minutes, please? Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the sewer line as it's proposed from 18th Street down as long as it's poured to.
To the alley.
Yeah.
High Mount Calvary.
As presented.
As presented.
As presented, yes.
Yeah, that's the alley south of Jenkins, yeah.
I second it.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, eight oh. Thank you for bringing a revised plan.
Yeah, we've already got that coffee.
All right. I see Mr. Boss in the audience, so we, now we can proceed back to item number one, our leaps update.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for accommodating my tardiness. I'll just jump right in here. The first thing I wanted to do was go over the rest of the process going forward, then get to the real reason we're here tonight, and that's approval of the job advertisement and the advertisement locations. And then introduce my successor, who's going to be taking the ton for the rest of the surge, so I'll just jump in a bit. But once we approve the advertisement and the locations tonight, we're gonna place the advertisement in those spots for four to six weeks, eight weeks, whatever you guys choose tonight. After that, the Monday after this application deadline takes place, our ranking committee is gonna start reviewing all of the resumes that have come into the league. That consists usually of our executive director, our deputy director, and Anna, all of whom have a great deal of municipal government experience. They're gonna use those rankings to compile a booklet, usually with five to 10 top candidates potentially ranked in order. That's something we can talk about tonight, too, if you do want a 1 through 10, or if you just want a top 10, a top 5, we can do whatever is preferable. We're gonna send those booklets to every single one of the council members by the Friday after this application deadline, so you'll have the weekend to review those candidates. Hopefully, we'll be able to schedule a meeting right after that weekend so we can keep the process moving. Where Anna's gonna come back up, talk to you about the candidates, and get your thoughts on who you think are the strongest six to 10 individuals that you'd like to schedule conference call or Skype interviews with. After those conference call, Skype interviews take place, you'll probably have a good feel for who the top two to four candidates are from there. We usually recommend that you invite those individuals to the city, one to tour the community, two, to meet the council and the staff, and three, for final in-person interviews with the entire council. Hopefully, at that point, and we've had great experiences with this process, the council has a good feel for who the number one candidate is, and then you can pull the trigger on hiring your next city administrator. At that point, once you've finalized the contract negotiations, the league will send out all of the non-hire letters to the candidates that weren't selected. We can help with any of the contract negotiations if you need that help. Usually don't, that's something that usually the city administrator, the current city administrator or the city attorney takes care of, but we have some resources to help with that. And that's the rest of the process. Before I jump into the ad itself, were there any questions about that?
So you're saying the application deadline can either be four to eight weeks? Did I get that right?
Yeah, and I put it as eight weeks because we do kinda have an extended timeframe and without time constraints being a limitation, I thought it would be best to take advantage of that and get as many applicants as we could. I think that there's a good chance that you could get up to 35, 40 candidates, especially if you do have a two-month timeframe.
The governmental journal doesn't come out every month, does it?
It doesn't. You would be placed in one of the physical, probably the, probably the February issue of the physical journal, and then you'd have placement on our online page for the duration of the application period. Well, if there's no other questions, everybody have a chance to look over the advertisement over the weekend. Not gonna hurt our feelings if you tear this thing apart, if there's changes that you wanna, you wanna make, that's great. We want, we want you guys to own this. I just wanted to go over a few specific things that are important for your approval. The first of which is the salary range. I think Anna sent you the salary survey that we conducted of comparable cities around the state. Based on that survey, we came up with a range of 65,000 to 75,000. If that's something that everybody's comfortable with, we do think that's, that's ideal for getting a good candidate.
Are these people that you placed, the cities that you chose?
No, some of them are just by happenstance, but no, this was just based on region and city size.
Now, I see, there's about three that are in the 80s that are listed. One has a PhD. You know, Linsburg is kinda the same size as Marysville, too, and they're paying 89.
Yeah, and I will say, Linsburg's city administrator, he's, he's been in the profession a long time. He probably started out with a salary in the 60s and has been rewarded for some very good work that he's done over his long tenure.
Okay.
You know, it's not gonna hurt your pool if you bump that top figure up to 80 rather than 75. It's just, I, I wouldn't list anything that you're not willing to pay. You know, if you are willing to give a rock star $8,000, that's great, but I would make sure that you're ready to do that.
So you put down 65 to 75, right?
Yeah.
You know, Rick, did you send this email out to everyone? Yeah, you did. Okay. I had asked Rick what amount he had put in the budget. Did you guys all get that email? And if you take out the raises for the other four individuals that are in the government and admin, it leaves up to, it leaves about 12,000 in there that we could use. So if, I mean, we could go up to 79 and probably be okay. Do you just wanna leave it at 7? Do you think we're gonna lose anybody from 75 to 80?
You know, candidates are funny sometimes. You know, there is a magic number they're looking for. I don't think you'll lose a lot, but, you know, there's, there's a. I don't think you'll lose a lot, but you know, there's a potential, there might be one or two that say, "Well, I'm making 76 now, I don't really want a salary drop, you're going to have to offer me 80." I think that there's limited premium on raising an extra $5,000, but it definitely wouldn't hurt.
So, based on our budget, we, no, just leave it at 75?
I think that's...
You guys okay with that?
If we find a candidate and they're, if they're looking, they're looking for a reason, and if they're making 79 now and they don't want to come down to 75, I think that's, and they still want to interview, I think that's something we could discuss with that person individually when they interview.
That's fair. I mean, you're, there's no, you're not legally bound to 75 either, once the negotiations start.
Okay. So I think, are we all okay with that? Brad?
Relocation, is that normal in government city?
Some do, some don't. The last, Roland Park, which is in the metro area, I think they offered about $5,000 relocation.
So it's not...
But I would say two-thirds of the cities don't offer much as far as...
I guess that gives us a little cushion there for relocation, for that $4,000, I said we could probably go up to 79 and...
And again, if that's an expectation of a really good candidate, that can be part of the contract negotiations. If you really want someone who are probably going to be willing to spend $2,000 helping them up here.
Okay.
And from the survey, the full survey, it looked like benefit-wise, we were comparable with other cities. Would that be the same for if we had a candidate from outside the state? Would they, would our benefits, because we don't talk about benefits at all, like the health and everything, so I didn't...
Yeah, the skewed salaries are usually metro areas. It really doesn't fluctuate that much from state to state. It's, you know, if they're in the Chicago area and a little burg that's the size of Marysville, they'd be making a lot more money, but if it's in a rural area of Illinois, it's going to be about the same.
But in terms of the health and all that, they're, we're going to be comparable, so it's not really worth mentioning then?
I think your guys' benefits are on par with other candidates.
Yeah, it does say competitive benefits.
Yeah, there we go.
Yes.
And they're longer by the salary.
And it doesn't say it in the short advertisement, but it does say it in the long.
Well, if there's, if that's a good range with everybody, the other topics I wanted to go over was the bachelor's degree in public administration. Was there any concern with that being a requirement? Is that too much, too little? That was based off the survey responses that we got. That seemed to be the general consensus, that that should be the requirement.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely.
And then at least five years of local government experience.
And you said that's preferred, right? Or did you say it's required?
Yeah, and you know, honestly, Mayor, preferred might not be a bad thing to insert there. I know that you talked a little bit about promising MPA students being potential candidates, kids that are coming right out of, you know, KU's got the best public administration school in the country. If you're able to lure one of those candidates here, you wouldn't want them to be turned off by the fact that you have five years of experience required.
Yeah, because it reads at least five years of local government experience.
I like the preferred.
Yeah, no, can definitely do some work, something with that to make sure that it's preferred.
Is that a pretty sought-after degree? Do they graduate a lot of people at this kind of degree?
You know, there's only, they only let about 15 kids in each year, but it's a lucrative profession to get in. Some of these kids are making $85,000 right out of school, and some of them make $150 by the time they're five years in. So, yeah, it's, it's a pretty lucrative field.
I have one. I have a master's. I have an MPA, not from KU, but law school.
I didn't know that about you, Rick. Now that you're leaving, I find this out.
Well, K-State, and which does state have MPA programs to do, and they turn out good students as well, it's just KU's known because they're the number-one school in the country. And the last thing I wanted to go over was the application deadline, March 14th. Does everybody feel comfortable with that? I just thought from our conversations, that sort of fits into the schedule of getting the person in place in mid-May, potentially having a chance to serve as like an assistant or volunteer capacity in that time until June 17th, and then taking over full-time in June.
Yeah, I think March 14th makes sense. You guys okay with that? Two weeks for a deadline?
So Anna will be up here around the 21st of March to do the first round review of candidates, and you'll probably know who you want by May 1.
Now, you had asked that, whether we wanted our candidates ranked or not?
Yeah, yeah. If there's a preference, I've done it each way. Some cities like to have the, you know, who's your number one, who's your number two, number three. Honestly, that's, it's kind of arbitrary ranking like that. I like to put a top five, because you just, you don't know enough about them until you get them.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, if you could give, you're going to give us 10, a date, say, top five and second five.
Yeah.
And we can move them around, but just to kind of give us an idea of what you, I mean, you guys are more used to looking at resumes than we are, and interviewing as far as that goes, so...
Yeah, no, we'd be happy to do that.
Did part of that include just some kind of indication of why you, I mean, we can look at the resumes, but why you felt like they might be in the top five versus the...
Their strength?
Just, you know, like almost a highlight of, here's why you thought they were the best candidates.
Well, in my experience, there's really two components to it, is their objective strength as a candidate, experience, education, long tenures, and good positions. But then the second one is a little bit of variety. I think usually the ranking committee, if it's all people who have been in the profession for 20 years, they like to add somebody who's a little bit new, maybe has a promising career ahead of them, just so that you guys can generate some discussion based on some different types of candidates. And that's why, that's why I don't like the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, because really, it's going to be up to you, and we just want to, you know, enable you to have a good conversation about a good pool of candidates.
Great. Well, if you get 40 of them, we'll be delighted.
Yeah, I hope we do.
I had one quick question on the short advertisement discussion. You have the word on the second line, it says the city's looking for an open professional leader. What does that mean, open?
Well, one of the things that was in the surveys that kept showing up over and over again was open communication. But maybe that's, maybe that's not the right word to use there. Is there some other word, or we could just take that out, just for a professional leader with a bachelor's degree with a preferred five years of local government experience?
So you wanted, you wanted, that was supposed to be with good communications skills?
Right.
That's what, that was supposed to represent?
Yeah.
Anybody had a better word for that than...
Yeah, that was, that was on me.
Is it a word count issue or a character issue? I mean, word count.
So you can say communicative or something along those lines?
Yeah.
What was that word?
Communicative. Communicative.
No, I like that.
I like that better than open.
Sure, I do, too.
Did you guys have any other questions about their ad, reading through it?
According to your timeline, this will only come out one time in the, what, KLM paper?
Yeah, the Kansas Government Journal, that's really all it's going to need. The same audience is going to see it if it was in one issue rather than the two.
He did say it was online, which is good to know.
Yeah, I think that, honestly, more candidates look at our online classified page than they do the physical classified section of the KGJ.
I look at it to see who's, you know, else is looking for the same position. On page two, you said that you thought that this person should be able to recently, well, perform this job recently within six months. Is that just a normal verbiage there? Is that normal?
You know what, I'm, you're talking about the job description.
Yeah.
And honestly...
And your technical skills?
This is a preview of the better service you're going to get from Anna, because I've never done this for a city as far as writing a new job description for a position, but she saw that in your contract and she took a stab at it. I'm going to let her cover that, but I would encourage you guys to, you know, look at this, talk about it, and see how you want to refine this. I don't think there's any reason to finalize it until the new person gets here, but maybe a topic of conversation.
Oh, okay, okay. So really, we're looking at the advertisement, and then the next list is whether, what advertisement we want?
Yeah, and I was going to go over those individually, and I will mention, this is on top of our contract price, and that's why it's an important discussion. How much do you want to spend on your ad budget? And here are the recommendations that I would make if you want to just go through the list. I do think that you should place it in the ICMA Job Center. That's the most expensive one, but that is the go-to page for reaching a national public management audience. Sometimes when we get smaller cities, 1,500 in western Kansas, it's going to be a regional search, there's not going to be a national interest in that position, and I will sometimes tell them, you know, you don't need to spend money on this. Marysville's a good job. You guys are in a good spot, northeast Kansas, hour north of Manhattan, solid budget. I do think that it would be worthwhile to post the job on ICMA. And then the next one, obviously KGJ. I don't, I usually do nation cities weekly as an alternative, a cheaper alternative to ICMA, so I don't think you need to do both.
Okay.
But as far as the Kansas Government Journal, that's the one that's going to be seen by local government professionals in Kansas, so I do recommend posting there. I think the same audience that looks at the KMU Dispatch, the Kansas Associations of Counties Newsletter website, is probably going to see what's on our classified page, so I don't necessarily recommend that. Governmentjobs.net, that's another national site. I think that since you're posting on ICMA Job Center, you don't need to pick that one.
Okay.
And then I do think there's some good regional ones to select, though. Texas Municipal League, there's over 900 cities in Texas, and every time we post there, we get a lot of traffic as far as resumes, so that's always a good one. I know it's expensive, but I do think it's worthwhile. Nebraska, just because it's so close, same with Missouri. I don't know that Oklahoma, it's only 20 bucks. If you guys want to post in Oklahoma, that's fine. We haven't had a lot of success posting there, but if you want to, we can. Colorado, that's not even local government-specific, it's nonprofit, so I wasn't going to recommend that one. And then the last two, because we have affiliation agreements with them, Iowa and Arkansas, they're free, so obviously we'll post there. And these will also go to the university pages at K-State, Pitt State, and KU, all the universities across the state, and that's free. And that comes to a total of $880. Really comments or recommended changes to that ad strategy?
I think that's a good idea.
The short, is that figure, is that a mix of short and long, or is that...
Yeah, they would all be long except Nebraska. Nebraska would be the, I'm sorry, and I should have pointed that out. I had the long ad for all of them except Nebraska. You know, it's $75 less to put the short ad, and you still get the position out there. If they want more interest, they can reference it at our website.
Yeah. In the short ad, can't we put, can't we put for a longer ad C? And send them to your ICMA Job Center?
Sure, for full ad, yeah.
For full ad.
That's definitely something to add.
I don't know about the rest of the council, but I feel like we don't need to advertise in Texas, do you? I mean, that's a hard...
We're being biased against Texas.
Well, only because he made the comment that he gets a lot of feedback from Texas.
There's a lot of people, a lot of universities, and a lot of educated individuals who could be an asset.
We just did a search in western Kansas, and they ended up selecting someone who was from Texas. You know, there's just a lot of cities down there, a lot of local government professionals, and if they have a chance to get their start in any city, you know, it's, I think it's good to reach out to them.
I'd say just because...
It's a big pool.
Just because of that comment.
It's Texas, not Missouri. Come on.
Well, if you think about it, his total is $880, and if he, if he gets 40 people, it's $20 a person to get a resume in to us. I think that's kind of worth the cost.
I think so, too.
So I'd kind of be apt to take his recommendations and...
I still say no.
Texas, a good chance you'll catch some Oklahoma and other, I mean, just because it's in Texas doesn't mean people outside of Texas.
You mean they'll stop by on their way through?
Yeah, there you go.
Well, since there is some division, could, Mayor, would you mind doing a vote just on this?
Okay.
I move to move forward with the $880 worth of advertising that's been recommended by Mr. Cost.
Second.
So any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, seven to one. Sorry, Keith. You're only fighting for 150, so you won on the 7/30, so...
I stand by my word.
Okay. All right, and is there anything else we need to know?
You know, with that, I just wanted to reference this document that Anna put together, kind of explains the rest of the process. Do you guys need anything you want to reference going forward? And I wanted to introduce you to her, because she's going to be taking over the process from here. Anna has about 10 times as much municipal government experience as I have. She's worked with several cities throughout Kansas, including as a human resource director, so I don't mean this with any false modesty, I think that you are getting an upgrade as far as the expertise to help you throughout this process, so...
Good to everybody.
So with that, yeah, I'll introduce you to Anna.
Well, thank you for your effort, Michael. I appreciate it.
I'm feeling some very big shoes, so, and now I'm very embarrassed. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. You, I believe, received my submission that I turned in Friday evening, so thank you very much. You also have a folder in front of you tonight with the same document, as well as some opportunities the League has before you. Regarding the job description, we learned last week, so forgive us, that I believe you are seeking a job description. If that is true, we are happy to work with you on that, and it does not have to be decided upon tonight.
Okay.
If you're not seeking a job description, we can certainly destroy this and move forward with the process. So if you'd like to let me know at a later date, that would be just fine. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you on this process. I believe Mike has left me in very good hands, and I'm available for questions. My business card is inside the folders. I'll be working with your city clerk, and your mayor, and your current city administrator, Astor contacts, but I look forward to hearing from all of you.
Well, we look forward to it as well.
Okay, please let me know if you have any questions.
On the job, was it, was there an extra cost then to do, above and beyond the current contract to do the job?
That is not my understanding, but I will find out for certain.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify, if we wondered when, it was said earlier, that would be done after we hired somebody, and I...
I believe it would be before.
Okay, because I would think you would want to be able to hand that out to...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, with confidence.
So you're desiring us to read through this, see if there's any changes we want to make, and let you know within the next, before you finish your deadline for the applications?
Correct. I developed the document in front of you after I reviewed what was presented to me by Mike, and reviewing what you had for your city plan. It may be appropriate for your needs, it may not be, so I'll wait your discretion on that.
All right.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Anna.
We look forward to working with you.
Same here, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I am not aware of any notice of hearing, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
I might mention, and Rick did mention this before, that the Planning Commission will meet this coming Thursday at 7:00, and on the agenda will be the review of the site plans for Marshall County Abstract's proposed office building, as well as the proposed Mount Calvary Church addition.
I'm sorry, what's the first one you referenced?
Is Marshall County Abstract Proposed Office Building.
Oh, okay.
And the second, the proposed Mount Calvary Church addition.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, moving back to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion?
Me, too, approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Just to let you know, the items five and six, Sharon did come in and sign, and she changed the date on one...
To January 28th instead of January 23rd.
In case you want to document that.
What was the change? I'm sorry.
On number five, instead of the 22nd, it's the 28th. Thank you. And now this does include payment for the water tariff. I know you guys discussed this at the last meeting regarding the lights, so this would be anything that... be anything that, about relating the lights, that we're going to go ahead and pay them in full.
Yeah, this would be full. The lights would be additional. I don't know, unless council really wants them to be full, right?
There's no recourse.
I don't know if there's a...
When did he get back to you? He said he was going to check and see if we...
He hadn't gone back with him yet, to see if it was...
I don't think we ever, he ever brought to us an approval to scale it up. If he did, I was...
If he did, it happened at a stable level, and then it just went over our head.
Well, the key thing, I read that in the highlights, that they had oversight, they made it bigger, and I was like, I don't remember discussing the rider, getting it made bigger. Not to my knowledge.
All the shop drawings go to us. We've got all shop drawings, it's part of the shop drawings we're using.
So you're, so you did ask Olson about it, they came back and said, we made these changes, so...
Well, they said he thinks maybe we got oversized in the review process, and trying to scale the pony, and I asked him to check the records and see.
I just, my thought is, they did it arbitrarily, and it's their problem, fixed.
Right, right. So are you proposing that we don't pay them all, maybe do a retainer, or pay them all, and hope that they'll come back and fix it, or?
I'm relying on their good faith, I guess.
I'm like you. If it, if it did go into review process, I mean, that's what, the things we looked at, it just went over everybody's head then. If it was upsized in our review, the pony trying to get it, you know, the correct rider on there.
Well, keep in mind, we pay those high engineering fees for them to bring such things to our attention. That's why we don't do our own engineering, so...
They have OE insurance for that stuff, too, so.
So at this point in time, you're saying, that they are saying, we should have been aware of it, and...
I didn't say that, I said, you think, I think Mark's comment was that, as originally proposed, it was supposed to cover all the lights, and getting upsized probably happened in review when we were getting the right pony rider and everything, and that may have happened. I've asked him to go back and look, check the records.
But he's going to get back to you, so.
Yeah, he was on vacation over the holidays, so.
Who was in on reviewing the right pony rider?
myself, Debbie, most of the staff, I think, we looked at them.
Okay, I don't think council was in on that.
No, we didn't.
I don't remember discussing the size of the pony. Okay, so we're just, we're going to go ahead and pay this with no retainer, and hope for good faith?
But this is for the, this is for the work, not for engineering, right? So this is, this doesn't, we're paying for the actual work, which we're saying it was probably, if anything, it was an engineer.
Right.
It's kind of, yeah.
Got you.
Is I, am I saying that right?
Well, yeah, like I say, if it got upsized, and that's what I was looking at, it would have been during the review process, when we were just looking at shop drawings.
Motion, second.
And trying to scale it.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. The next item is the Presentation of Appropriations Orders Number 3618. Move to approve appropriations ordinance number 3618.
Second.
Is there any discussion, or items you would like to discuss? Okay, roll call.
Baikman?
Yes.
Basinger?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Echis?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Eight zero.
Yeah, okay. Rick, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Really no action items here on anything, well, other than our clink project. Just have the comparative budget statements, and in front of you, you have the correct sewer revenue fund comparison. The one on your agenda is actually the water. They got PDFed on there instead of, so you can see that. That'll make sense now. But the cash and budget statements show our expenses for budgeted funds was $9,191,782.17. Keep in mind, that's an un-audited figure, that's just based on our reports. Final, it may come out a little more, a little less, shouldn't very much. When you couple that with our non-budgeted funds, which are on page 45, it comes to $10,115,688.01. The budgeted funds numbers, they were a little skewed by the expense on our bond and interest one, when we did our refunding, by about a million dollars, so really you could say, say they're $9 million, 9.1, it was about $8 million, because there's a million dollars in the bonds, payment reflected on that, so really our actual expense was eight, roughly eight. I don't know how the auditor reflects on that, but she'll address that. Our general fund did see a decline in our ending balance from the $526,170 on January 1st, down to $485.77 on December 31st, which is difference of, decline of about $45,594. We did, of that $45, we refunded about $9,122 to one of the townships due to an overpayment they had made. That money's coming back this month. If you take that off, without that, you would be putting there, you'd be at about 36, something like that, in red. Overall general fund expenses, $251,019.191 in 2015 were about $34,000 less than the $2,85,314 roughly that we spent in 2014. And in our water revenue fund, we finished with a balance of $740,329. That was higher than the January 1 beginning balance. What accounts for that good finish is that we suspended eight months' worth of transfers, $123,336, to our bond and interest fund to pay for water system debt service. Instead, we diverted that to pay our cash for part of our water tower project. Had we continued that transfer, the ending balance really would have been in the range of ending balances for previous years, would have been about normal or average in past years. And then sewage revenue fund, which is in front of you, not in your agenda copy, finished the year with negative cash flow of $38,689. That is the third year in a row that we finished the fund with a negative cash flow. As you know, we, this, the February billing, we do have the adjustment in the sewer rate. That should offset some of that, so it could be the end of the year. We don't know how that affects that. And then the sales tax fund finished the year with an ending balance of $720,276, from the beginning balance of $988,308. And then if you go to the next few pages, I actually tried to show you, and the transfers report is also there on page 50, budget versus cash balances in the budgeted funds. In these two pages, I've compared the beginning and ending cash balances. First page on 51 is for the budgeted funds, and then the second page, 52, is for all funds together on the right side of the sheet. That first sheet, called Budget Versus Cash Balances in Budgeted Funds in 2015, shows projected beginning balances are budgeted and the actual cash balance of each of those funds on January 1 of 2015 on the left side of the page. The right side shows beginning cash and ending cash with the differences. And seven of those 15 funds entered in the red, eight finished in the black. However, we did find out, I think Friday, that that's going to be affected by the fact in the bond and interest 1A fund. The transfer got sent to the wrong fund, so that'll be corrected, so I didn't get the corrected statement out, but a transfer was incorrect, and made, we've corrected it with the general entry, so we'll correct that. So otherwise, it really doesn't change much at all on that. All three reserve funds, the sewer replacement, the machine equipment reserve, and the water utility reserve fund saw a reduction in the cash balance on December 31, 2015, from January 1, 2015. So you can see what those differences were. Any questions so far, Nina?
I just wanted to comment, I looked at some of these, and this, when I looked at, since he listed those three reserves, as we do one down, I noticed the sewer replacement fund went down $58,000, but out of that, we paid for the CIPP of $89,000, so that explains part of that decrease. And then the machine equipment reserve went down $22,000, but we did buy a police car for $32,000, and the backhoe a $90,000. So those were purchases we chose. And then the water utility reserve went down only $2,000, and that was because of the Center Street project that we added.
That's correct.
So those were, that kind of explains everything. The other thing I wanted to point out is on page 45, you know, we talk about that days carry forward, we've talked about that. You show where our water carry forward is 177 days, and our sewer is 124. That was something we talked about at the budget session, so I just wanted to point that out. Rick presents that every meet, once a month, so you guys can kind of watch that. The other thing that I wanted to notice is that, over the last three years, we've paid off $3 million of debt and have not taken on any new debt, other than switching the KDAT debt to a GEO debt. But we haven't really issued any new debt, we've paid off $3 million, and our mill levy has gone down 10%. So overall, I think we've made a great stride in making our city financially stronger. When the overall cat balance goes down for the sales tax fund of almost $300,000, there's two components of that. One is $150,000 cash that we transferred to the capital improvements fund for the GI project, and the other is we bought the depot. So both of those are justifiable, or things that we should know what, why it went down, and are happy with it, because we voted to do those things. The only other thing that I looked, noticed is that with our general fund going down, if you look at page 34, it shows the expenses by department, and overall, our expenses were 85% of budget, and as we've talked in the past, we have to have, we can't spend the entire budget, we have to have, we spent, aim for about 85%, and that's what I kind of thought, we as a council thought we should aim for 85%. But there's only two categories there that kind of concerned me, and that was admin and police, both are, spent 93% of their budgets and 92%. And if all our departments spent 92 or 93% of their budget, our carry forward would be about $180,000 for the general fund. So those are just my two areas of concern that we kind of need to keep an eye on, to try to keep those down at 85. And I did talk to the chief today, and he said that he thought that they were always supposed to aim for 80, and I said, well, I believe you should supposed to aim for 85. So, and so I just wanted to make sure that you guys are, to, we, the reason why we would aim for 85 is to keep our carry forward balance for the general funded of, over, between $400,000 and $500,000, which is what it is now. So I just, I just want to communicate to the department heads, if you guys are all in agreement, that we kind of want to maintain the general fund at that amount. I don't think it's excessive, but I don't think we really want to go much lower than that. So if the department heads believe that they're supposed to be keeping it at 90, and we really want them to keep it at 85, are you guys okay with communicating that to the department heads? That's your aim number, not 90%? Okay. Because that's what the chief said. He said, just let me know what we're supposed to be aiming for, so. Okay. And that is all I had to say. Okay.
And then on pages 53 to 56, payroll report is attached. In 2015, there was an additional 2,467 and a half hours worked among all of our payroll centers. Total hours in 2015 in the general fund actually declined, and also in the library fund. They were up in varying degrees in some of the other cost centers. Additional cost of wages for the year 2015 was $48,603.60 above our 2014 cost. And I think the reason, explaining why hours are down in the general fund is because we moved the pool out into a separate fund, otherwise, they were always, two years ago, they were reflected in the general fund, so that's why the general fund hours are showing less.
Well, plus, we didn't have much overtime for us. We had good weather.
Made a big difference.
Yeah, late, early 2015 and late 2015. So we didn't have the overtime hours on the street and cemetery that we've had in the past.
Right, makes a difference. And so far, yeah.
It's been good.
It's been hard.
Of course, it's only January 11th.
Yeah, we still got 10 more weeks to win. 10 weeks, 10 weeks. On our clink project, I received an email, which is attached on page 57 and 58, from Don Huesky, that we can proceed with our plan development on the clink project. Now, several ways we can go about it. We could do a solicitation like we did, tried to do for the geometric improvement, didn't get any response, or visit with CES and ask them to provide us scope of services, and then cost that out. I guess, what's council's desire, which way would you like to do this?
Well, I think we should always solicit bids.
I should, too.
Well, you don't solicit bids.
I'm sorry.
You don't bid engineering services.
Okay, so you do a solicitation.
You get requests for proposals.
Request, RFPs, okay.
A semantics.
But I'll be surprised if we get much response. We didn't before with the HRS improvement project.
Yeah, but I think we should put it out there. I think that if you don't, I guess I go back to the, I know it was a bid versus an RFP, but the bid on the HRS, if they're not going against anyone, they can just shoot you any price, where at least they're, if they think they're being considered with someone else, they would be more conservative, I would think. So I would entertain a motion to see what the council desires.
I think we need to go with the RFPs myself.
Are you making that motion?
Yes, to go with the RFPs.
Is there a second?
A second. A second.
Is any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven one. All right.
And on pages 59 and 60, tried to update, I think this is all current on everything on our 2015 projects, latest updates that should be current as of this meeting. I have started a new list for 2016, with some of these projects, about four of them at least are going to carry over into that next list. I'll add the clink project to that list. I don't know if I have it by the 25th, I might have not. I should have it by the first meeting in February, updated, there's a lot of cost on it.
Now, the only thing I was questioning, and I talked to you briefly about it, that Custer House Museum, it shows the estimated cost of $121, and expenses to date, does that $121 include the 17 that's in this?
I think so, I think I've dated that through the appropriation ordinance.
Through today?
I think so.
Okay. But you said there's still...
I've got a master list on that.
So there's still work that needs to be done, so do we need to increase the projected cost on that?
No, no, I mean, no, well...
Because you said there's still work to be done.
No, that's not, this is estimated, includes engineering. I'll look at that, but...
Okay. Because otherwise, it looks like we've priced down.
But there's, some of the foundation work is included in that number. For the gates, for some of the design work that was done, there was an engineer that came and looked at some of the stuff, there's some roofing that was paid for quite some time ago, so that's not all. Yeah, it's museum summer kitchen, but it's, that's not all the grant. It's all, most of it's all tax credit type.
So you'll just update that and explain it to us at the next time?
Well, yeah, do the best you can, yeah.
I know.
I'll look at it, because I've got it updated.
Did you guys have any other questions about that? I love that.
The 11th Road Project, was Tony going to bring up deals for, so that they'll redo that this spring?
Oh, the grass?
Yeah.
Tony, you want to talk to him about, tell him what's going on with the grass out there, the ditch, what they'll do in the spring, since you're here?
Yeah, they're, they're aware, they can go back and kind of find great and see that in spring, so if you guys need something in writing, we can sure prepare that.
They want to, they want to, just a statement from the contractor, signed by the contractor.
Or you can say that that completion is subject to blah blah blah, so, okay?
Yep, certainly.
Thank you.
Any questions on any of those other items? Got a couple other things here that came up. At the dump, there were four people on Saturday, and there were two on Sunday. Do you want to keep the dump open the rest of the night? Do you want to just close it?
Do you want to make a... Do you want to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion. We close the dump for the winter season.
Second. And so when you say for the winter season, beginning when, opening when?
I think we'll review it about the first of March.
Okay. Is that okay with you? Did you second it?
I seconded.
First of March, it's okay?
Depending on any ice storms, et cetera.
Well, let's see, what's our first meeting?
On many ice storms.
Yeah.
14th of March is our first meeting.
I'm just telling you.
I think we'll just look at it 14th of March.
Okay.
As our first meeting, not, we won't open it for them. We do have contractors asking over now and then to get in there and dump some of their stuff like that, but, all right, anyway. All right, we'll close that effective this weekend.
Okay.
We'll get a notice in the paper to close for the season.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau.
And then, I think Darlene had asked the last meeting or one of them about street name signs. So I had Gary take a look and see just exactly what's needed. He's got a good inventory. And pricing what's needed. This is signs, street name signs, just the signs, and we always put the new posts, to replace all of the street name signs, and this is, this is all them here. This is two and a quarter pages. The cost to replace those signs would be $17,540.
Are these the bad ones?
Yeah, these are the bad ones. That's why it's taking so many years to do this.
Okay.
When we started this a number of years ago, that's why we didn't become council, because the figure was, was in the low five figures to do it. We know it's expensive. So that's why, we probably haven't been spending enough every year on it. We've spent about three, we have about six budgeted. I told Gary, we need to get close to that budget on this spending. For general regulatory signs, which includes school time, speed limit signs, a couple of speed limit signs, no emergency signs, no parking this side into school zone, school crossings, no parking left arrow, do not enter, no parking on Fridays, no parking here at the corner pedestrian, and slow school zone signs, all of those that are, some of them are suffocated, you can't hardly read them. The cost to replace those would be $9,480. So what I've told Gary doing, he missed this, is pick out these ones that need one or two, kind of like eating away at debt, let's get the little ones taken care of, and then we'll start looking at the bigger ones where we need 19, 15, 14. Pick three or four of those, get, get the worst ones and just start picking on it.
I think that's a good idea.
Just wanted to report to you on that since, that's question, if you do have a street name sign that's absolutely horrible, can't be read at all, just send me an email or something.
Or if it's missing.
Or if it's missing, send an email to me and/or Debbie, and I'll pass it on, and the guys, if they have that sign that in order, if they have that name in stock.
Well, I drove a lot of my ward, and I noticed Seventh Night and 11th Streets have gotten mixed. And one thing with, now with the reflective signs, I thought, that is really important at night for fire, police, ambulance, to find the right street.
But keep in mind, there's $17,000 worth of signs, and I didn't count how many's on this list, but there's probably 36, there's probably at least 75 of them need to be done. I didn't count, but there's, that's a rough count.
You said 6,000 was kind of the number you shot at them to aim for?
It's within our budget. That's what we got budgeted. And it looks like we've only been doing about 2,000, 2,500 here, so we need to put a little more effort into that.
Okay. Well, that'll be as cool then. We'll make an improvement.
So anyway, Mary, that's all. I just wanted to update you, so you know where we're at.
Thank you. All right. Nothing tonight? Nothing tonight? Okay. Standing committees, start with street. Water and wastewater? Parks and Rec? Cemetery and airport? Police and fire? Admin and finance? You guys must want to go see that Clemson.
Mayor, I have a question about the small claims on Chris Crower. What, have we started proceedings on that?
Still have some documents together, but. We'll try to have some, but it's probably something to discuss in an executive session next time, maybe at the next meeting. We'll see if, we've just kind of started the process, finding out what we have to do and how we have to do this and stuff, so.
All right. I don't know if any, well, yes, I do know of appointments. I have appointments. What am I talking about? Okay. I have someone I would like to appoint for city prosecutor. I am going to split that position into our city attorney. We'll have a city prosecutor and a city attorney. And I have talked to Elizabeth Baskerville Hilton. She has agreed to do it at the same rate as Norbert Merrick at $110 per hour plus mileage. She's got lots of experience, as you can see. She's a Washington County attorney, Washington City Attorney, city attorney for several cities, and has a private practice. I called a few people, got great recommendations from her. She has contacted the clerk of the court and the chief of police and is knowledgeable about our current situation, and she desires only to be city prosecutor.
Question?
Yes.
Will she be able to come to all the meetings then, or?
This is city prosecutor. This is for the new court. So she's willing to do, serve both, at both the preliminary, the first meeting of the month, as well as the second meeting.
Okay.
And I have talked to Judge Lamro, and he knows that I'm making an appointment today because there are things, issues that need to be resolved on a timely manner or we'll have to dismiss them, and so she is aware of those as well. So I would entertain a motion to accept her as our city prosecutor.
I move to accept Elizabeth Baskerville Hilton as our city prosecutor.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau. Okay. Now for our city attorney, I would like to nominate Craig Olson. He is actually in our audience tonight. He's patiently been waiting. If you'd like to come up, I'm going to talk about you a little bit, so then you can, they can ask you questions. Oh, did I not?
We got an extra one.
Craig is with.
You guys got it now? Yeah.
You got the next one?
I got two.
Pass them back.
I didn't divide them even. My apologies. Okay. Now everyone has one?
Yeah.
Okay. Craig is with the firm that Norbert Merrick recommended for you to take his position since he was appointed judge. The firm, the firm is very strong in municipal law experience. Two different people have said that I'd be hard pressed to find a law firm in Kansas with more municipal law experience than Morrison, Frost, Olson, Urban, and Schwartz. They said that Mr. Frost has been city attorney for Manhattan for 30-plus years. He's currently, we're acting on a contract basis. The city attorney, I feel for our, our position, it's important to have them review contracts from a viability standpoint, expertise to protect our city, to protect our governing body, and to protect our staff. Norbert Merrick, we paid $110 per hour plus mileage, and Mr. Olson presented to a rate of $155 per hour, including travel time one way to Marysville and mileage to be paid by the city. Now, I understand this isn't an increase, but I would like to point out that he has agreed to only, if it's your desire to come to one meeting a week like Norbert was doing.
A month.
I'm sorry, did I say week?
Yeah.
Okay. A month. And I think that that's worked out pretty well for us. Obviously, he's available by phone at any time that we need to call him, and he's willing to come to two meetings if we want him to. I did do an analysis, you know, we, we made a bump when we went from Mr. McNish to, we went up to Mr. Merrick, and we had five months of billings, the McNish firm, and we had five billings, five months of the Merrick billings, and even though Merrick was 110 versus 75, the billings were significantly less the last five months than the first five months. So the expertise comes into play with the amount of time spent to do the work. With that being said, I would entertain, you could either, would you like to do questions first to Mr. Olson, or would you like to make the motion first? First, I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll have discussion.
I will move to offer Craig Olson the position of city attorney.
City attorney. Second. Okay. You have any discussions with Mr. Olson? He is here.
You said 155 an hour?
Yes.
And I can, if you want, expand on that a little bit more.
Okay.
It is, our firm's what we call municipal rate. It's, it's a significant discount from our normal hourly rate that we would have for private clients, and of course, the reason is it's repeated business and it's work for a unique client as a municipality. Also to expand on what the mayor discussed with our sort of institutional experience or expertise, if you will, in addition to Bill Frost at the city of Manhattan for over 30 years and still on board in a, in a consulting contracting capacity, Jim Morrison, Bernard Urban, and myself have also dealt with different municipalities to include St. Mary's, Ulsburg, Ogden, and recently, St. George. So there's, and that's just, I think, what we're currently at, and there's been others in the past as well. So there's, there is quite a bit of institutional experience of varying sizes as well, that I think will be useful for Marysville and its situation, which I see as a good one and exciting to be involved in. So if there were questions as to that 155, that's sort of our set rate that we have for all municipalities excluding Manhattan. It's a different arrangement with Bill Frost that's been going for a long, yeah, long, long time, so. Any other questions I can answer for you?
All right. We're going to take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau. All right, well, welcome. You can come join our table.
Okay.
Our meeting's not over yet, so. Welcome. We're glad you're here. I guess we never said, do you guys want him to come? One meeting a month, and do you have a preference on what meeting to have, to come, if you want one? Did you want one meeting a month?
We've been doing the second meeting, correct?
We've been doing the second. Are you guys okay with that?
I think that's good.
You want to continue that? Is that our, with you, second meeting of the month?
Certainly.
It'll always be the fourth. Fourth Monday.
Right.
Unless it's a holiday.
I will always defer to the council as to when you want me, when you feel you need me. There's obviously some exceptions. There might be some issues on the first meeting that you might want, but the way I look at it, I'll have it blocked out, meetings every month, two meetings, but knowing I'll, I'll be going to the second one if that's what you, you all prefer.
That you desire?
Your desire.
And then if we need to bump it up, we will. Or if we need him to come, we'll call.
Yep. Okay. That works.
All right. The next item is executive session.
Madam Mayor, I move that we go into executive session for 10 minutes, personnel matters, please.
For non-elected personnel?
Yes.
Who needs to be there?
Mayor, city administrator, and city attorney, with council members.
Okay.
Second.
So you said for 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
8:25?
8:25, so returning here at 8:35.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau.
Get up. Right there.
Debbie.
I'm like candy out here.
You guys.
It's not the same.
Hey, Brian.
You know, I'm new.
You gotta pull up.
The problem is you gotta pull up.
There we go.
I know, you said really long.
It's not hazing.
I'm short enough.
You're fired.
I don't know what you said.
I can come down and I'll back you.
Hold that two minutes.
I was waiting for the bills and stuff.
Oh, okay. Of course you come. We've never used that before. 35, yes. You call that, okay?
Yes, 735.
I'll call us. This meeting's back to order, and there were no binding decisions made during executive session, and we are reconvening, or we are reconvening the regular city council meeting at this time. And we are at roundtable discussion. Keith?
I'm getting a lot of feedback on the stoplight at 20th Road and 36. A lot of people feel like we don't need a stoplight there.
20th Street, you mean?
Well, 20th Street. And I kind of agree with them if we're going, you know, I think we ought to spend the money to put a stoplight at 11th Road and 36 instead.
Well, I would hope that we would do both.
I've heard more people say they don't want one at 11th Road.
Oh, really?
We've got more stoplights than we need now.
You actually hear people saying they don't want one there?
Right.
If I had a dollar for every time somebody said they wanted one there, I'd have this big a chip on the dollar. If I hadn't referred to somebody, I wouldn't have a one.
I hardly ever say they would.
Really?
I'm just passing the word on.
Yeah, okay.
We've got more stoplights than anybody from here to Colorado.
Yeah, well, yeah, but if you've been through any of those towns from here to Colorado, they're all ghost towns.
Seneca's only got one, and that's on demand.
Colorado.
Seneca's only got one, and that's on demand.
Yeah, but Seneca doesn't have the daily traffic we do. They don't have any factories, much to speak of. Oh, out on the west edge.
We said, I mean, it's Lincoln at 9.
Not compared to the, they don't have any 800-person factory.
You got to remember, program them about the only community along this drive, though, that has businesses that actually, the whole length of our town border the highway.
That's true.
Because like Washington, they're all the main businesses through the.
What there are.
Yeah, our in downtown, so, and our downtown runs right down our highway, so.
It is almost the highway, yeah.
It'll be set to flash, just like the others are.
Anything else, Keith?
Yes, I don't know, what, what do you guys feel if Black Squirrel Committee would ask the city council if they would have the city employees to mount them big squirrel signs on the streets and stuff like that in front of businesses?
You mean the animals? That signs?
Okay.
Mount.
I call them signs.
Do you know what that entails?
Well, what they're thinking is they, they're not going to ask the city, I don't think, to pay for one, they was going to pay for two of them instead, but ask the city if the employees could install them.
Let me talk to Dale.
See what?
We'll follow. How big are these going to be?
They changed the size on them. They counseled the last meeting, so.
Okay. The one in the city park was.
He did have a list, I've been, it's been a while since he, it just needs to be updated, he does have a list.
Yeah, we kinda need to know what he's addressed, know what the status is on all those, so, okay. Anything else?
I would like to mention, in the clerk's report of receipts, there are several donations, and I think our citizens should know about them. The Weber Guys Foundation donated four thousand dollars toward the Kester Museum, and Leo D. Ring Trust donated one thousand dollars to the fire department. There was a donation to the dog park, and there have been a number of donations to the, the, the dog park. Seems like there was one more. Oh, the state of Kansas, there was a forestry grant of twenty-five hundred that, that had been requested.
We get that every year, don't we?
If you plod for it.
Okay. But no, that's a good point to mention, the people that have made donations to our city, so thank you very much for pointing that out.
And thank you to those who donated.
Yes. I asked Debbie, I said, would we request that from the Weber Guys donation? She goes, no, it just came. I said, well, that's a very nice gift. Says the one from the Leo Ring. Okay, Brad?
One quick thing, that on Elm Street over by Las Cabanas, there's a trailer parked on the street that's been there, almost like permanently sitting there, and I didn't know if that's something we knew about, and it's not, probably made it just seem like it's a bad precedence to let somebody park.
Especially where it's backed in like it.
Huh?
Especially the way it's sitting like it.
Yeah, you know which one I'm talking about, and I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a name on it, I didn't, I didn't know if it was with one of our contractors, or if it was something to do with Kester, or if it's just.
I think it is, I'm gonna check on it.
Okay, that's, if it is.
Another one of the things that we can have a list to know the things that are addressed is a great idea, okay.
I have a question in regard to that. Is it proper to, I think it's Ninth and North Street, there is a small trailer that's parked in the easement?
Like a camper trailer?
Mm-hmm, and it's got a for sale sign. It's been there some time.
I know, I've seen it.
It's not on the street, at least we can blame the street.
There's a lot of places with, you're right, there's a couple other vehicles I know of in easements, and there's places where there's, you know, power poles and stuff piled between the sidewalk and the street, he knows what I'm talking about, you know what I'm talking about. I don't think we've ever really looked at enforcing those rules, have we? I mean.
By complaint, usually only.
Yard guard.
Rose colored glasses.
So, do you, do you want it to be pursued by Dave, that, that specific house? Yes, okay. Will you add that to Dave's list then?
Nineteen North.
Yeah. Alright, Todd, you're up.
Nothing.
Vicki?
Have we written a letter of thank you to the county commissioners for giving us that car at the airport? Have we written a formal thank you? Okay, I'll do it, since I'm on it. What?
Go ahead.
No, you're saying something, what do you want?
No, I'm biding my time. I don't think we should tell them thank you for helping to support the airport that we do everything else with.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Just putting it out there.
Okay, and I'll.
Do they thank us? Do they thank us for having an airport for them to use? I'm just curious.
Okay, well, I would like to write, if you give me the authority, I would write the thank you to them for the use of the vehicle, for putting it in our, putting it in our care to use at the airport.
Actually, I think that should come from Debbie.
That'd be fine with me, just as long as it's done. Also, I think it'd be nice, what Darlene said about the people, the acknowledgement of the people that donate money, do we, do we send a thank you for that? We do?
Thank you, Debbie.
And the car has not been used or moved that I've seen at the airport, do we put stable in that? Have we put stable in the gas tank?
I don't know if he's gonna need it or not.
I know, they check on it every couple of weeks.
Dale, I've seen in his minutes, in his, that he's started it and started running, so.
Make sure the battery's.
Yeah.
That's what I talked about.
Okay, that's all I have.
Denny?
I just wanted to know if we got any paperwork on this approval of the signs on the bridge southbound yet?
Flags.
The flags.
Yeah, it was going, according to the secretary, that was gonna, they were gonna do something this year. Has anything come in? No. They were going to generate, I'd already communicated with Womango to start that, that it should start.
Well, one guy asked me the other day, so.
Well, I thought the status was that KDOT was okay with it, and we just have to do a policy to say we're okay with it, don't we just have to make that motion?
They were going to generate an agreement.
Right, they were gonna generate.
They were gonna generate an agreement from their end.
But didn't they say we could go ahead and put them up?
Yeah, we could go ahead and put them up. But they were gonna get an agreement.
So we, as a council, have never really made a motion that we're okay with the, we've discussed it, but we've never said we're okay with the flags as they are at this time.
Do we need to bring that up, that council meeting?
Okay, are you trying to get home for the game?
No, no.
Was it determined that that's our property? That that's within the city limits?
We decided, the KDOT said, decided that where the flags are, that portion of the bridge belongs to the city. But we, as a council, discussed that we were in favor, but we never made a motion that we were okay with them placing the American flags at the locations they have at this time.
I didn't know if we could go back and do that now or not. I don't know, I don't know if there's a need to, I think, I think they're pretty well understanding that.
Just a consensus.
Do you believe there's a consensus? Okay, I just read through the minutes, and I didn't really see a consensus statement.
I don't think it was brought up as in a motion or anything.
Do we believe it's a consensus at this time?
Well, and on that bridge, they have the, the flags of each of the branches of service, too. They added that this year. So if we're gonna make something that we allow, then we should put that in there, too.
When we.
We're referring to all the flags. I don't think you need to specify those adages, the flags, they were included in the display, there's no need to.
I doubt they'll put anything controversial.
Well, maybe we just need to say, American flags and service flags, and leave it at that. Is that right? Okay. Denny, anything else?
No.
Kevin?
No, ma'am.
I don't have anything, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn and go watch football.
We'll adjourn.
Second?
Second.